Call the September twenty seventh, twenty twenty two Board of Education Studies, such in order. Roll call.
Somebody's computer.
Everybody check it.
No, it's.
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 So. Kate Tom. Troy Carr.
Here.
Deb Baker.
Here.
Clay Kloner waiting on Jamie Clapham.
Here.
Jim Hanson.
President.
And Michael Berkland.
Here.
Please turn us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda. Jim and Deb, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Item number four, first off, the CCR discussion with John Carroll.
Thank you, let me pull up the PowerPoint real quick. Okay, first off, I want to say thank you, and I'm excited to come tonight and speak to you about the CCR department, and in particular, the academies model. And I'm excited because I think this is, this department and this academy model is extremely important, not only for the students in the community, but for the, the economics for this region. And I'll explain that as we go through the PowerPoint. We have, through necessity, have, I would say, restructured the academy model, and that's what I will talk about as we go through. There is now millions of people outside the workforce, United States of America, and this is affecting the nation, and it's affecting Rapid City in particular, Rapid City area schools, as we discussed in other meetings. We have a lack of teachers, especially in the career technical education. So out of necessity, we're, we are combining the six academies into three, and I'll go through that as we go. What I would like to say is the, our ultimate goal, and what is college and career readiness not changed, that's going to stay the same. And that goal is graduating every student with a plan, be it go to a two or four year institution, go join the military to, to serve our nation, or go straight into the workforce. But every, every graduate has a plan on what they're going to do and moving forward in their life. Get this to go. Yeah, okay. So we have data, and we're using some of this data to make our decisions, it's data driven. So if you look at this slide, you're going to see that fifty-five percent of the graduating high school every year, graduates every year going to the university. If you look at the national average, national average says about a third of that is going to graduate with a degree. So we're looking at less than twenty percent of students graduating from, our high schools are going to get a two or four year degree. You look at the, are students prepared for college and career readiness, those numbers are a little bit lower because we're still in the implementation phase of the, the current model, academy model, year three of a year four implementation. So those numbers will probably be a little bit higher if we were to go into the future next year in the current model. But when you look at the graduates that are going on to higher education, fifty-five percent, let's just say that, that we're off five percent. So we're looking roughly, any way you look at it, it's fifty percent of our students are not going to college. And how we can gauge this, Mr. Tally and I talked about this just today in a meeting with one of our partners. The way you can gauge it, we can look at this data and we can break it down and further and further, but all it takes is us to go out into the community and live our daily lives. And we see that there is a labor, skilled labor shortage in Rapid City in our region, in the western region right here. So let's look at these numbers from perspective of a thousand students every year are graduating or timing out of our high schools, a thousand. So half of them are going to go to a college or a two year institution. Five hundred of the thousand are going straight into the workforce. Do you see it? And the answer is no, they're not, they're not, when, they're not prepared with a skill or certification, or a skilled talent, if you will, ready going to the workforce. And we can see that just by daily living, or when we go talk to industry leaders, they're all saying the same thing. I don't have enough employees, I don't have enough skilled employees, I need at least students or adults, young adults coming to me with the soft skills. If they have the soft skills, I can teach them the technical skills, but I would prefer to have some technical skills coming with me. This is our current model that we're in, it's six academies. What we're going to do is combine them into three, three academies, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. But this is a necessity, this is because we have a, a teacher shortage, FTE shortage, and especially a shortage within the career technical education field and the courses that we're trying to offer. When we looked at consolidating the current model, we had to have some parameters, what, why are we doing this, and what is our goal moving into the future? One is to ensure staffing, even as we're going to see, and I'm a very optimistic guy, but a realist too. And data showing the number of teachers graduating and getting into this profession is decreasing. So we're looking at several years of a reduction of staff, or people being able to come in with retirements, resignations throughout the nation, et cetera. So when we built this model, we had to ensure that it would be, we can stand on our own with our current staff. Secondly, we needed flexibility, we needed flexibility, not only just for teachers, but we needed flexibility for the students to have academies with robust course selection, and the teachers to be able to instruct it. Third is consistency. Change is, is not a bad thing, we're, we're looking at change and it, and it's good, but constant change i- is, is not a recipe for, for success, so we have to build consistency. And what does consistency look like? It looks like a foundation that's solid, academies that are working with industry leaders, courses that are developed for, for student interest, teachers that have the endorsement to teach it. And industry leaders and employers that want those, those skills. And lastly, we need something built that is sustainable. We don't want to come back and, and recreate another academy model. We believe that we have something that is going to be very successful, and it's going to sustain itself through time. And what we have now will not look like what it today will look like in five years, that's our plan, we want to grow it and make it more robust and more refined. But there has to be some consistency in order to have that stability. These are the revised academy model. If you look at it, we have three of them, it's arts, humanities, social services academy, and then your pathways that you're going to have is performing arts, social services, and the visual arts. The second one is a STEM academy. We have, they're listed there, I won't read them, and then you have advanced technology, business hospitality, construction, technical trades. And that's our proposed, so we have numerous classes in there, and we have the flexibility for students, say that I am, I want to be in construction. And I go into the, the advanced technology academy. Doesn't mean that I, once I get into struc- construction and I'm doing well in school, and I think, you know what, I'd like to be a structural engineer. That I can use my electives to go over to the STEM academy and take courses, so now I have career exploration through two academies instead of being, being locked in, if you will, into one. So I want, we want the flexibility of the students to explore, right? We have, we have God given talents and desires and beliefs that we, that we have manifested in us right now, and, and we act on them. It's our job to provide this foundation for our students, because as we all know as adults, those talents and skills change, or they manifest themselves later in life, that you didn't even know existed that you had. But when you have that strong foundation, and you have some career exploration through high school and into college, or into the economic sectors. It builds that strong foundation for you to be successful as life changes, as we know it all does, we all experience change throughout life. This is what we call like the pinnacle, the true north of our academies. So if you, if you can imagine going through freshman year, you go through freshman seminar, you go into tenth grade, you, you do an introductory course, or a course in your field, and then the junior year, you take a higher level. Well, that end of that junior year and that senior year is your capstone program, and we want it to be very broad and very, just very broad, so we have a, a multitude of, of things to choose from. One thing that I'm very excited about, and we talked about this in February, we are in the final stages of developing our apprenticeship programs through the Department of Labor. For example, let's say I want to be a plumber, and, and that's what I hear from all the skull construction and action mechanical, and all those guys that I talk to say, if one thing you can get me, can you get me some more plumbers? So let's just use that as an example, I'm going through, and I'm going to be a plumber. I go through my construction courses, I really like it, I'm going to, this is the field I'm going to go into. When I get into my eleventh, my junior year into my senior year, I can opt in or get into an apprenticeship through the Department of Labor, where I'm going to get paid. I'm going to begin to get my hours to my journeyman status. And then, once I complete that jour- that apprenticeship program, it's the, it's the equivalent of getting an associate's degree. So I come out as a senior, now I have about, I would say about fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred hours of probably four thousand hours to become a journeyman, so I have about half of my journeyman hours completed. I come out with a certificate, and I ask all of my guy, all the, the, the technical trade leaders, and I ask them, what does that look like if, if J.J. Carroll came out with a apprenticeship degree, if you will, in plumbing? They said, well, there would be a bidding war for your services, because we know you have the intellect to complete it, and you have the skills, technical skills waiting, and you completed a program that's strenuous and, and, and time consuming, it takes commitment. So I'm going to hire you, and then you're, you're, you're going into your new career as quote, if you will, a junior in college. I just have two more years, maybe a year and a half if I work hard, to get my journeyman status in that, in that trade, and now I'm extremely marketable to anywhere in America. And these Department of Labor apprenticeship programs span the states, it's not, not restricted to South Dakota. So, but there are, there are a multitude of other capstone programs to choose from. So that is, that is the end result, we would like the students to get to the point where they go into their capstone program, and they acknowledge, well, this is something I want to do. Or, and I, and I have this argument, and it's a good discussion to have, or almost as valuable is, oh my gosh, I, I don't want to do this for the rest of my life, this is horrible, this is not what I thought. I want to be a nurse, and I go in, and, but I didn't know that I didn't like blood or touching people, I'm out, right? So, but that is good, so now, and when I go to higher, higher learning, or I try to get apprenticeship program, I don't waste my time, time is valuable, life is valuable. So I think this, this capstone is, is the pinnacle of what we're trying to do. So what is the future, what, I talked about some of the obstacles, I talked about some of the things that we want to accomplish with. One of the obstacles that we have to be upfront about, and we discussed in the prior, prior board in, in February with the CCR department, is the, the facilities and, and the facilities being inadequate. The way I like to, to try to describe it is, we have a problem, and the problem is skilled labor and the workforce participation, all over the nation, but in Rapid City and, and western region in particular. In this hand, I have all the talent, all the labor in my hand, which is our students that are going into the workforce, that are not going to college, these five hundred. Over here, I have all of our employers here in Rapid City, big, small, and in between, and they're dying for this, this labor market. There is no facility to move those students through to get to this point, and I'll give you a good example, a small example, but a good example. And Belfushe has fifty-five hundred residents, Belfushe has a CTE facility, it's kind of small, but it's very effective. And one of the areas that is extremely effective is they have a welding program. And we went, visited, my team has gone basically all over the state looking at CTE facilities, and this is, I'm just using them as an, as an example, it's a very small community. So we walk in, and I'm in a classroom, and out, and through the big windows, I can see fifteen or twenty students welding by themselves, with the blowtorches going, they're creating stuff, and I, I, I interrupt the, the teacher and say, you know what, sir, you don't have to. Really talk to us that much, I know you got a class going on, no, no, they're all, they're self sufficient, they're, they're juniors or seniors, it's junior, senior class. In fact, the majority of them are already working in the field, and they're going to time out and graduate, and they've got jobs waiting for them, just waiting for them. It's a bidding war, so what, well, what can that young man expect to earn at eighteen years old going out, because he's not going to go to college? He said twenty-two to twenty-five dollars an hour, starting, because he's been through their program, he's getting certi- certifications through there, that's just a small example. Go to Sioux Falls, right, would be comparable to us, and they're bigger, but comparable as, in size, as far as the closest thing to us. Enormous CTE facility, enormous, has fourteen to sixteen career clusters in there, services five high schools, the pro career schools, and the private schools as well. You go to a smaller school, smaller district just south of Harrisburg, CTE facilities, there's CTE facilities throughout the, the, this state, and outside of our state that we visited, Nebraska and Iowa as well. This is, this is something that needs to be discussed and moved on, in my professional opinion, that needs to be moved on, because not only the students need it, and the community, the economic sector needs it. And where in America, right now, does everybody agree on not only the problem, but the solution? It's rare, but everybody that I speak to in the economic sector, they want this, they're demanding it, the teachers are on board, we had meetings with the teachers about the restructuring of the, of the academy model, they're on board, they, they see the value in it. We believe strongly in it, I think a CTE facility is, is paramount, I do, and I know that we have other issues facing the district, financial needs, but this is, this is very important, because if we're going to. It's just as important to make this happen, the community needs it, and what our department, and lastly, I'll leave you on this, we are not creating something at whole cloth and hoping that it works. We're not doing that, it's being done and replicated throughout the state, and throughout states outside of South Dakota, and it is incredibly successful. From small schools, districts in Belfushe to, to Sioux Falls, and everyone in between. We're not recreating the wheel, we're actually cutting and paste, copying and pasting what is extremely successful in other communities, where communities are thriving, with their high schools connected to the industry leaders. And I think that is, is, is absolutely needed in this district, I'm excited about what the future holds for CCR department, and I'm excited about what this could become, because it is needed, and. The potential is, is limitless, and I have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay, do we have any questions from board members? Go ahead, Michael.
I have a lot of questions, so cut me off if someone else needs to jump in here and I can finish more. So thank you, first off, I like this plan a lot more than our previous plan, it feels a lot more sustainable, as you mentioned. So just a couple questions, let me find them here. Can, and I think, I think you might have hit this, they can change pathways throughout, like, it's not a rigid, like, once you're in arts humanities, can you jump over at any time, or is there restrictions on that?
Yes, you can, you can jump over at any time, so what we would like is for a student to go in to, say, the STEM, and they go through and take the initial course, and then, for lack of a better term, a foundational course. But they have like three and a half, four and a half elective credits that they can take, they can use those in other academies to, to explore and see, well, maybe this is something I would like to do. Why is it, why is it, why would it be considered a negative to have two or three things that I've, I've engaged in, either extracurricular activity, or with a course that I'm studying, that I go, wow, that's really touched me? I think I'd be very good at it, in fact, I feel it drawn to me, I don't see that as a negative, and that is something that, the flexibility piece, that we wanted to put in.
I agree, yep, because that was, that was one of my concerns about previous pathways, was that. So kind of related to that, when, when will they make this decision, when do they choose their pathway for the first time?
They will do that going from the freshman year, freshman seminar, into their sophomore year, same thing. And this, we've been working on it for several months now, we at the point now that we're going to provide it to the teachers through our next professional development day, allow them to have a, a robust discussion and input into it. We believe as Mr. Tally and Ms. Wager is, in our discussions before this started, was collaboration is the key. If everybody has ownership, then it works better than pushing it from the top down and saying, hey, look, what we decided up here at district, you're, it's going to be great, do it. And we know the implementation of any project in any sector of, of business or, or government, it never works that way, so we're looking for total collaboration, and therefore, we have total ownership.
Um, will there still be middle school exploration type classes, I believe those were going on?
No, they will continue on, we'll have eighth grade fair, eighth grade exploration going in, so that's the, that's the great thing, is we, we, we begin in eighth grade, and then we, we continue that on into the freshman seminar. And so there's, we, we discuss all sixteen career clusters and go through exploration that way, so it's, it's discussed, and, and it's not, it's not new when they become a sophomore, and like, holy cow, I got to make a decision, no, it's been discussed for, for over a year, two years.
Awesome, thank you, and just a few more, sorry. So on the, when looking at the academies, is it just in additional elective classes? Or I know previously, we were looking at like, I'd say health services in math classes, and health services in science and social studies. Are we still looking towards that, or are we just looking at?
We are, where, where the classes can go, they can count for either or, is that what you're asking me?
Um, no, I was, for example, I was going to be teaching, before I resigned, I'm going to be teaching the geometry for the health services pathway.
I'll jump in here only because I know exactly what you're talking about, so under the old model, there, there were, there were, under the old model, it was, it was design of, of core classes. That would be, there would be academy classes that were specific, the curriculum was going to be specifically designed for those core classes, so it would be, you know, different math courses for different academies, so no, that, that's not going to happen.
Okay, awesome.
I hope that answers your question.
It does, and I am very happy to hear that. Last question, and then one quick comment, so for the capstone programs, is that like a choose one of those type of thing? Okay, perfect, and then the last thing I just wanted to say is, one thing that I've heard from a lot of students is, we do obviously want to have jobs and opportunities for that. But one thing as a community and as a board, to kind of focus on is making sure that we are presenting these as options, not that we're giving up on them. I think a lot of students saw themselves, like, I heard, I'm not great at math, so I'm going to go into construction. And so I just want to make sure as we implement this, that we keep in mind that you can be great at math and go into construction, and vice versa. And so just making sure that our students are hearing like positive things, that Rapid City wants them, not just because they're good at construction, but because they are good at math, and they are a good person, and all of those things. And that is all, thank you for your time.
So just to, just to follow up real quick to your, to your last comment there, that, that was kind of the foundation of the changes, and we had to look at, a- as Mr. Carroll already stated, restrictions with facility and infrastructure as well as staffing. But we also wanted flexibility and choice, I, I think under the, the previous model, I, I think there were just too many constrictions. Students didn't have a lot of wiggle room in their schedules, and, and so it was difficult to put, just, you know, because I had the experience putting the master schedule together every year, was extremely challenging. And trying to make the, that, that whole academy teaming process that we went through was just difficult. And, and the other thing we really were happy about is, we really wanted to include the performing and visual arts and have pathways there, because those are our strongest courses in our, in our high schools and in our community, our art classes, and so we really wanted to ensure that we were bringing. Performing and visual arts on it as, as a pathway as well, so I, I think our, 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 our teachers are going to be really excited about that. There, there is, when, when we get through the October seventh PD day, we're going to be having a CTE training, we're going to, we're going to be specifically going through the courses with the teachers, all of the teachers. And, and then, once we're through with that, we'll get that information out, out to the board, just in case there are any edits to it, but we're really excited, so we're really working on. Developing or continually developing the courses we already have and making them, for example, I'll just use media production, because that's my favorite, you know, we have a, we have a green room at each high school, and, and we're looking at purchasing additional equipment and. And, and bringing those classes, you know, into kind of the twenty-first century, if you were really utilizing the technology and doing some really fun and neat things, so that the kids are excited about it. Sometimes less is more, when you think about this overall model and the courses that are, they're involved in it, sometimes we realize that we scale it back, and we really focus and emphasize those really good courses, kids are going to be excited about that. But there's also the potential to add additional courses down the road, especially in the, in the performing and visual arts area, just some, some really, some really neat courses with some, with some really cool names that we hope we can get to in the coming years. So this is just kind of a starting point, and, and we think it kind of fits what we currently have as far as resources go. So I want to thank Mr. Carroll and his staff, of course, Mrs. Donovan's here, so I want to acknowledge her as well, and Mr. James over at Stevens, Mrs. Donovan's at Central, and the teachers that have really put a lot of work into this, this is really a grassroots effort, and, and, and it's, it's. It's where it should have been to begin with, to be honest with you, and so I'm really happy that our teachers were involved in this process and, and, and moving it forward, so thank you.
Jamie, go ahead.
I was just wondering, because I know this was one of the issues with staff, so would all three pathways be equally available at both high schools, is that the, like, what we perceive?
Yes, ma'am, they will.
And then, this is probably almost more of a parent question than a board head question, so when you get in these pathways, and you know, you said, well, I got into STEM, and then I decided I wanted to, who is it? The counselors, or like, who, who's the person who keeps? The counselors or like who who's the person who keeps him on track for graduation when it gets kind of?
That will be the counselor, yes, ma'am. And we're having, we're having discussions with them as as this is going on too. So they're fully aware of the changes moving forward, yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Jim, go ahead.
So I have two questions. First question is partnerships. Have your partnerships grown in the last year?
Yes, they have. I have one uh Friday with another uh. I wouldn't say a construction company, but it's more like a business in in construction. So every day we're gaining more and more. Um we are supposed to be in the third year of implementation, which would be the junior year. The capstone should not have start, would not have started until. Twenty three, twenty four. We've accelerated that because I saw the need, we saw the need, excuse me, for uh the industry leaders have come to us and said, hey. We we wanna get in ahead of this. We wanna not wait another eighteen months. So we began the process of meeting with with partners. Um it has grown, not to the point that we like because we're having to rebuild, restructure. Once, cause I don't like going and having discussions of, well, this is what it might be. Now I have a very strong foundation of this is. This might have a few things, but it's kind of in the weeds. They don't need to know um or care about, but this is our model now. This is how we're moving forward. Um so. I have three capstone coordinators. My, our goal in my department is to make them so busy that I have to come back here and ask for. Uh more F T Es for for capstone coordinators. So to answer your question, we are, um and it's gonna accelerate at much a higher rate now that this has been completed.
So are these partners, because I know in the past they have been, are they, are they? Involved with uh any part of the curriculum as far as what their needs are, not in what we're directing, but.
Correct.
Needs are?
Yes, sir. We have advisory councils, which are made up of industry leaders, our teachers um and community people. Com- the community. Um so we want their, we want their, I I'll give you an example, I had a a meeting with Mr. Skull. And we were talking about, we had all the the courses that were now available through C T E. And we picked one out and we said, ah, we think that one. And he's like, absolutely not. Right, he's like, no, that is not, we don't want that. And and he gave us very clear reason why that is not what the industry needs. So that was, that's part of our advisory council to say, that's not what we need. Do we go to Monument Health? We're we're speaking with Monument Health. They're a great partner with us. They're very, they're very direct and clear on what their needs are. They need, they they need everything, right? Be like everyone, but they need sterilization techs, they need C N As, they need nurses. So. Well, what does that, and our question to them is, what does that look like from our end? What is it that we should be teaching and 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 instructing? So that the the individuals that are in the medical field, that they have cer- certain certifications to be the most marketable they can be. So we're not doing it in a vacuum or a bubble. We're bringing in all of our partners to make these decisions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second question. Comment was made about facilities, classrooms, uh equipment, Mr. Tally brought up. Uh bringing us into the twenty first, hopefully the start of the twenty second. Century um is that you had made a comment that that's where we're lacking.
Yes, sir. I feel that that is um the most glaring issue facing us. Yes, I believe what we have now. In our ability to to what we wanna become, I believe that we will, um the best word I can say is triage in every year. To make things come together. They're just inadequate. And when uh I know Mr. Tally's going to Sioux Falls and and probably will go to their uh. Their C T facility and look at it. And I told him today, cause we were talking, I said, I don't even wanna talk to you about it. I just wanna, I'm really curious when you come back. I wanna know what your take is. And my take, when I went in, I walked in and I was like, my first instinct, my first feeling was, wow, this is impressive. It felt like a college. And then my second emotion that ran right behind it very fast is, why don't we have this? Why are we not? Why don't we have it?
Sure.
It really was because. And we need it probably more than they do. I would say that for. We're we're more for lack of a better term, a blue collar area here. Nothing to be looked down. It's incredible work that needs to be done. I mean, you you have people in the construction or or service industry, uh nurses making six figures a year. That if if we infuse, let me just say this. If we had five hundred, we have five hundred students that are not going to college every year. What if I was able to just get a magic wand or stamp my fingers and say that two hundred of them this year. Had certifications and skilled training across economic sector and we infused them into our economy in Rapid City and Western Region. Are you telling me that that wouldn't have a profound impact? It would have profound impact. Now think of that number getting closer to the five hundred number and happening every year. It changes the whole out economic outlook in this region. You're talking about crime, homelessness, you're talking about increased sales tax, property tax. Everything you can imagine, everything increases. So it's right there. You can feel it, right? I I hope that I'm articulating myself correctly that. If we move on this, this could have a profound impact, not only just in our school district, but in our region.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Mr. Carr. Oh, sure, sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to mention that it comes as no surprise to those of us who were involved in the. Planning process before because I know Mr. Tally and myself brought forth some of these very concerns that we have seen occur. We had concerns about the staffing, we had concerns about the six pathways um being held at both high schools. Um we visited and toured these places prior to this even being implemented in Rapid City. Other places that had working models that we were not following. So the fact that these things have come to pass and Mr. Carroll and his team have been. Trying to work through this for the last few years is not a surprise. Um we, you know, a- all of this was designed really pre-COVID. Um we have encountered a whole different workforce need um following COVID that that we are dealing with. We do believe that we can impact positively the the community. But Jamie, going back to your um question about. Can I, can we guarantee, I mean, the ideas that we're gonna offer these at both high schools. This year, we let, we had nine C T positions that were unfilled, kind of left on the table. So we have to recognize that. I think by developing these stronger partnerships. We're going to be bringing forth an M O U with Monument Health to bring um to work with them to provide instructors. We we see that that could grow. But there are so many opportunities here and um there are grants that we could write for. Um Belfush, in fact, has written for a grant where they have, they are installing in their C T E program. A multi-T V unit that surrounds a, an individual who sits in a, at a chair. And they learn how to drive um backhoes and they learn how to drive tractors and they learn how to drive gravel trucks. And so they, in a very safe environment, they're learning this very needed skill. Um we see advertised on T V and on billboards, the need for um for drivers, for cement trucks and gravel trucks. And and these things, we had. Yeah, bus drivers, right? Exactly. Um. We had a gentleman deliver gravel out at our home for a project that we are doing and I said to him. Do you wanna drive bus? And he said, no, because I can work all the hours I want to at this job. Um and get paid by the load and, you know, that's not how bus driving works. But if we expanded our ability. Um to offer services, I said, oh, come drive a bus for us, then you can drive the truck in the middle of the day and then come drive the bus for us in the afternoon. But we've, we've gotta meet the needs, not just our needs as a as a district, but our community needs as well. And designing this does fit um the needs of our. Community and and we'll be coming forward with some other ideas that we have that we think that can really benefit. Um im- implementing this program, but we need to make, we need to make the switch because what. JJ said to me, I think the first time we met at the beginning of of um. My position, JJ said, I was sold a bill of goods that that does, is not working. And um and and I think those of us who've been in the district have recognized that, that. We created something that is not sustainable and it's not doing what the community needs it to do. And I applaud the work that the team is doing to really get down to what we need. Um but I wish, I wish we'd been better listeners, you know, many years ago. Because our community was saying things to us like, we want a, we have a robust fine arts. Program in our schools and parents wanted that and and it was like that. While you can, you can kind of do that, but you have to do this. Um. Mr. Berkland's comments about forcing teachers to teach in a, in a certain pathway. This allows um more flexibility in our scheduling so that our teachers are not just. Our English teachers or our math teachers or our science teachers aren't just able to teach to one pathway, but they can be. Addressing all the students and the students get to really get into the specifics and the needs of these programs. And it is just absolutely a better fit for the district.
Go ahead.
I just wanna echo the sentiment uh for the need of a a C T E facility. And um I'm very mindful um in saying that, that we already have. A list, a laundry list of other facility needs. But I think um the investment and um being a business major, we talk about return on investment. I think the investment that we would make in this type of facility would have um exponential benefits. To individuals personally, to our community, to the country. And especially addressing the the current employment needs of um of of our of our area. The the other thing that I wanna piggyback on is what Mr. um Berkland said is, um when I was growing up. My mom drilled into me, go to college, go to college, go to college. And it it was almost to the point where if I didn't go. Then I was failing as an individual. It wasn't till I was an adult and had my own kids that I realized. Eh, that would may not be college material, right? So that doesn't mean that you're any less than anybody else, it's just. Your, your brain works and you do different things. And so I s- I I hope that when we talk about these other options. That they're on par with, you can either go to college, you can either go, that that is not, well, if you're not gonna go to college, then you do this. But it's on par with um all the other options that a person, that a young person um can choose from.
And 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 I would like to to follow up on that, that that is what we're discussing. Um because it is, you're right, college is not the answer for everyone. And uh. Doing work on my house. I can't do plumbing, I can't do electrical. Those guys are, to me, they're they're doing quantum physics to me. So it's, and that's how we're discussing and when we're talking to our partners to come in, they're guest speakers and or they come in and and do a class. I always tell them, when you come in there, I want you to do. Talk about your trade, but I want you to talk about the financial aspect of it, what you can start, what's the medium, what's the end? What does it look like when you retire, with a four O one K, with your health benefits? I want, I want that robust discussion that, hey, look, you don't have to go to college to make six figures. You're just wired differently. You're great with your hands. You're a truck driver. Takes incredible skill to do eighteen wheeler to go long haul and it's incredible skill to do concrete. When you, when I go watch, we have a concrete partner with uh Lester uh concrete and I watch those guys do it, that's a skill. I mean, that's a highly skilled job to lay concrete and do it properly and it's paid that way. So we are doing that. When we talk about these academies, we talk about these careers, there's not one that's better than the other. It's it's talked about on the same level. It's just what your talent is and your skill that's been given to you and it's embedded in your in your heart.
And Bishop Carr, I would say that I don't think just your parents were selling that on students. I mean, I think that we. In South Dakota, really pushed this college track at kids. And convinced parents and convinced kids that that was the only way to show that they were successful. And I applaud those students and I had many of them that said, wait a second, I'm not college material and actually have gone out. And far exceeded me in wage earning. I have a former student who's an underwater welder. Out off the coast of New Orleans and uh every once in a while, he gets in touch with me. I mean. Graduated high school by the skin of his teeth, but but is doing amazingly well down in Louisiana. And we have to give kids and parents permission to realize that there are way better paths. For some people. And additionally, I think that that is one of the reasons we're in the the um college loan debt situation. That we find ourselves in in this country because we convinced people, they needed to go to college and they took out. Buku loans to do that and then they dropped out after two years because it wasn't where they were meant to be and. They don't necessarily want to pay back money for something that they didn't finish. And that's where we wind up. So giving everybody permission to recognize what is their path. What are they going to be successful at? What are they going to be good at? And I think JJ makes a really great point, showing them earning potential. Because that does matter to kids and and families. So it it really is a strong option. Even though, yes, I made my girls go to college, so. I, play.
Thank you, President Thomas. Um you know, agree with everything you said. I wanna echo uh Bishop Carr's point, you know, is. This is, you know, I think a worthwhile investment for the district. But again, point out the fact, there's a lot of investing in our facilities that we're gonna need to do. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a tough job over the next couple of years. Um you know, trying to meet all those needs, get everything up to par for in our facilities, for our students, our families and our. Our staff, but I think this is something that we do need to take a very serious look at um to make that investment, to allow our our students to, you know. Have these um options available to them, cause I I agree, college isn't for everybody and there's a ton of need out there for. Um you know, for construction, for plumbing, as other things have been said, so. Um you know, I look forward to, you know, work on the facilities committee and work with the board and the community to find a way to get it done. Thank you.
You'd mentioned that there was grants available, are there grants available for the facilities, maybe, or no?
I don't know of grants that are income, that large encompassing that work, but I think that we can work with um community members. Rapid City Public School Foundation just last night wants um. To do some vision fundraising, so presenting to the community. You know, a a specific vision of what we need and then working with them. I think it's something that that we can explore, but I think the grants that I've read or seen are are smaller for, you know. Equipment or a a specific need.
I have a comment there, and most grants support what you're already doing. So we'd already already have to be doing something and present, this is what we doing, we need help, whatever. So. In my experience, you know. You gotta be doing the work already.
I have a few questions and a comment as well. Um to Michael's question about jumping around the classes, can they go back and forth? Is that only with like the electives? I'm thinking the core classes. I know that when my kids are going to high school, they're, you're in a class, you're done. You have to, you know, fill it out. But with an elective, if you start it, is there like? Two weeks or how how long do you give them to before they can go into another elective? Or wh- what is the flexibility there?
Go ahead, ma'am.
So President Thomas, I think that when we talk about them switching programs, it'd be like at a semester time.
Okay.
But one of the things that I know that I brought forth is. What a freshman student may choose as a pathway because their best friend or their significant other is. Going down a certain path. Things change sometimes in high school, so maybe they find themselves and they want to go down a different path, or maybe they. Are no longer friends or involved and and they realize that, you know, they picked a path that wasn't their. True course and previously it was kind of a little bit like, well, you picked it, you're. You're kind of stuck there, but now at a semester, they could go and talk. Now, having said that, it does get complicated when students select courses and we staff. Based on the number of students. Based on the number of students that have selected that course. So we hire and, you know, the, the FTE that we need to, to, to teach that. And then we can't let, you know, fifty percent of the students that signed up for that class, drop it. And then not have anything for that teacher to do. So it truly might be a yearly option. Um I do see that Mister Seals and Mrs. Hafner are on, so um I don't know if they would have anything to say about that. But they've been very involved in this process as well. Okay, um so. To your comment about being great in math, what if you're not, not great in math? Um I had wished that teachers would have concentrated and helped me focus on my strengths. Um one year at um the Associated School Board's convention. They had a speaker who talked about Ronaldo Cristiano, who said awful at math. But he had teachers that said, had they forced him to be great at it, he would never have been able to focus on his other strengths. And so while somebody might not be great, I think these teachers might be saying, okay, let's just make sure you get through this. And, and focus on the other strengths that you do have to make you great at those. Doesn't mean that they can't pass though, you know, it, it doesn't mean that. Um but to the page expanded capstone program. On the senior experience, students demonstrate what they know and what they can do, students develop a plan of action. What, how do they demonstrate this? What does that look like? The middle one, senior experience. Is that similar to what college students kind of do as well?
Okay, write like a thesis, yes. So we have, yeah, it's project based as well. So we'll have capstone coordinators at all three high schools that really guide them. And, and, and help them choose which, which experience would be the most effective, beneficial to them. And they will guide them through that, yes.
Okay. And then you said you had a professional development day prepared or whatnot? And I wondered what, what kind of training is going on for that? What do you have planned?
Well, we um, so this is what, this is our academies with all the, the new three academies with all the pathways. And the courses that are aligned there. We're, we're going to push that out to the teachers through our, prior to the, the PD day on October seventh. And we're going to have a meeting prior and then we're going to allow them to break off into their, their cohorts, if you will. And have a robust discussion about the courses that are listed in, in their cohort. What is, what are the courses that they don't see that's relevant? What are the ones that are relevant, but they're not being effective and can we build them out? Like Mister Tally talked about media production, maybe it's just training, maybe it's resources, maybe it's, maybe it's all of that. But find courses that we have right now, because we have a plethora of them, find which ones that are most effective. Student interest, industry leaders and, and, and teacher availability. And then grow them, make them more robust and make them better. And then the ones that do not work, that we've already begun to pare down, then let's identify them. If we have low turnout, student uh turnout and um it's struggle for the teachers, we don't see it really relevant. Then let's remove it, let's repair it down, let's be very efficient and very clean and then grow it, like Mr. Charlie said. Over the next couple of years, we'll, we'll see, as time develops, we'll see a hole, if you will. In our, in our core curriculum and then we fill that hole with what, what's needed. For example, for uh computers, just something that is growing, the biggest, they, they say, they say, economists say. The largest growing uh profession cybersecurity right now. So we're, we're talking about developing that course in, in two years, eighteen months, developing and getting through council and getting approved. So that's an example of, of us looking at the totality of our academies.
Okay, that's all I had. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm going to add one final comment and I won't overlap on everything, everybody making a lot of great points, so well said by everybody. But the, the one thing I will add is, you know, with this particular program and the realignment and also looking at the potential of, of, of a CTE center. We're, we're trying to create what we call a school to employment pipeline rather than a, as some people call it, school to prison pipeline, right? What they're referring to with that term uh from time to time is, is the amount of kids that are not completing high school. Because I, we all have to be realistic and understand that there is a percentage of students that do not graduate from high school every year. So, you know, um I, I think where, where communities and schools are going with this is they want to be able to say, look, okay, twenty percent of our kids didn't graduate this year. From high school, but I can show you that ninety percent of that twenty percent that didn't graduate has an industry certification and they have a job. I think that's what communities and schools really want out of us. And so it's, it's, it's for all the students. It's for kids that are, that are, that, that have aspirations to go on and do other things, you, you know, maybe they're college bound, maybe they're not, they're completing high school. But we also have to remember, last year, our on-time graduation rate was seventy-one percent in the district. That means seven out of ten. Kids completed high school on time and three out of ten did not, you know, and then our completer rate, which, which was better, eighty-three percent. Those are the students that finished high school maybe a year later than they're supposed to. So you really want to look at that completer rate, but we're still, two out of ten kids aren't finishing high school right now. And I think that's, that's a, that's a big thing that we need to focus on. So that's, that's that other component, I think, that we need to keep in mind.
Thank you. All right, um thank you very much for all the hard work you've done in your team. Um and we look forward to more implementation of this. Um so we are now onto the organized chart. And that is our discussion. Um I'll let you take over and let us know what you've presented here. So President Thomas, um when I was brought on. There was um. Prior to me being brought on, you had some present, the board had invited um District Forty-nine from Colorado to come in and present. Their take on how to organize a, a school district. Um we have traditionally in Rapid City been following a very traditional organizational chart. Where um there was the community and then the elected school board. And then a superintendent and everything in the district fell underneath that. Very, very traditional. Last year, District Forty-nine presented and they presented a. A model that had um. The community and the board and then underneath that board, there were multiple leadership roles. That, that kind of were all on the, the same plane and that, that included um CFO. Uh Chief Financial Officer, a CEO, their terminology is Chief Educational Officer. And uh COO, uh Chief Organization, Organizational Officer, which is kind of facilities. And then underneath that, they're a very large district, so they had zones and kind of um. Leaders of those zones and principals. And that was something that we were looking for, but one of the things that District Forty-nine said when they came and presented, that making a switch takes time. And, and I think the board recognizing that need for time, elected to have this interim year. And in that interim year, um because of the way things had stood, there was an opening. In the traditional hierarchy in Rhapsody Area Schools of. An assistant superintendent position was open and the superintendent position was open. And so Mister Tally and I were hired in an interim role. And through um some executive discussions and through some um. Board leadership discussions. We have been looking at where this, the board is going to go moving forward. And so I don't know surely if you can pull up one of the old, the, the old models. Um the, the, I have it, but I don't think I can, maybe I can send it to you. Okay, that would be perfect. I, I think I have it, okay. Thank you. So here is the, the. The last Rapid City Area Schools Leadership Organizational Chart that, that has been completed. And it was completed in May of twenty twenty. And um lots of things have changed because we have separated from Western Dakota Votech over here. So that doesn't exist anymore. Um but we have the community, the Board of Education. The work that is done through um auditing and through legal, which auditing keeps our financials above board. Um legal, we ha- we have um need for legal representation. And we have been discussing that in other start study sessions with the RFPs we have out for legal representation. And then there was the, the superintendent, chief executive officer role. And then underneath that, there was the assistant superintendent here, which oversees. Buildings, students, principals, security, and then the various director positions. That, that are listed here and, and what is underneath them. Because I am serving in an interim capacity. And I, I want the, the board to be considering how we're going to move forward because these things take time. I scheduled the discussion tonight about the organizational chart. At least, I think we at least need to go to this level here on, on. Community, the Board of Education, and then whatever this level underneath the board is going to look like. Um whether it is traditional superintendent and everything underneath it. As has been the case historically in the Rhapsody School District. Or if we want to, the board wants to consider expanding that out in some way. Through a partnership with other leading roles in this district. Or if we want to expand it out as far as like a District Forty-nine model. So one of the things that you've been handed here is a. Is um the leadership, the, some leadership discussion that we have had. And I think I can.
Yeah, could you screen share that too?
I can screen share that too, I believe. It's gonna not look as pretty as the one you have in front of you, I don't think, but. Did you send it to me on a PDF? I'm going to stop sharing for a second and find it. I have it. You're sharing or you sent it to me? Okay. Okay, sorry about that. So um this has the community and the Board of Education. It also has those legal and auditor components. And then one of the, one of the discussions that we had had was, was um sharing responsibilities at that top level. Which I believe um insulates the board or gives the board some greater. Ways of communicating with the communit- with the, the district as a whole. If um, if there's some sort of. Wall or something that happens there. So in the, in the discussion, it's the superintendent or CEO. Model and uh CFO, COO model. In that, we are, because we are so much smaller than a District Forty-nine. In being financially responsible to our community. I'm not sure that we would need to expand out to the three positions if, if two would do it or one. And then going down, that would have to be expanded on later, is this. Is there an assistant superintendent position, is there director position, is there support services and what that looks like? And, and then that model with um that communication piece where the superintendent and CFO. COO position, they are working in tandem with the board, but not over each other. So um they would answer, those positions would answer directly to the board, but they would work together in leading the district. Um this is a model that is utilized throughout the United States with many school boards. Because the fin- the Board of Education has the ability to create policy, create budget. And hire the superintendent in a traditional model. This would expand that out to, the board would create policy, handle the budget. Hire and fire and evaluate a superintendent, CEO, but also hire, evaluate. Um fire, whatever, the, the Chief Financial Officer slash um CEO. And, and so when you think about the board's need to. Handle the budgetary constraints of the business of the district. In my mind, this makes sense because it pulls that budgetary piece up to a level that directly answers to the board and not to the superintendent. Um which is a, which is, I think, a primary responsibility of the school board. So this is just a starting point for that discussion. If this is the model, then the next step would be putting out the RFPs for a superintendent search. Or moving forward with how you would want to address this um move, but it's open for discussion.
I will comment really quickly before I take any questions. In the previous contracts for superintendent, it does say in there, a lot of people in the public get confused and kind of. What does CEO, we don't want a, a CEO running, it's not a business. But it's in their contract that it says superintendent slash chief executive officer in their contract. So it's not really new, we just don't talk about it, it's, but we just refer to that person as a superintendent. Um I just want to make that clear. And then if, actually if Coy, if you're on or can. And we've had a few discussions um with the whole board, just kind of what are we going to do moving forward? Because this kind of thing, if, if we're going to do this, we are going to need a strategic plan very quickly and this would help. Um start that, knowing where we're going, how the organization is organized. And then um. You know, through, when we, when the board changed over and we were going through each director and finding out what exactly they do. We were sitting down with each one for about an hour, two hours, however long they needed to give us all um their job descriptions, et cetera. And we had the attorneys there and they went through the, the point by point, you know, liabilities, issues, different things. And, and Coy could speak to this. The CFO, the, the Chief Financial Officer has. Not the same as the superintendent, but. Equal in liability issues in what they cover, they're just different. But how important those jobs? But how important those jobs jobs are are fairly equal but different. If you know what I mean. And and I hope that he can get on and at least explain why this is a good thing, bad thing, and actually he's. Pros and cons, I guess, and he's been in both positions so that I know that he could speak to both pros and cons of of this model. So anytime if he.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely, President Thomas, thank you. Yeah, I so you you made a lot of really great points there and I think there are. A lot of things to consider and and I I've had the opportunity to be a part of some of these conversations and. Try to do my best to to answer some of the questions as they came up. But I I think there are a few big picture points that that really stand out to me. The first response that I had in these conversations was. I really think that first and foremost that the board needs to feel like they are answering. Whatever question that they have with any type of structural change. That 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 you all are are thinking of or entertaining and. That can look differently, obviously, depending on the situation, depending on the organization, depending on. The structure you have in place, the structure you wanna move to, but I think the ultimate question is really are 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 we addressing the issue at hand? In terms of what brought the conversation up, so that would be the first thing. Secondly, yes, I I have worked in. Under both of those structures, I've worked under a structure in which I was directly reportable to the Board of Education. And then obviously have worked in a a structure where I was or that position, I should say, was reportable to. The superintendent, I I think that there are, of course, you know, major benefits and and and. I don't wanna say drawbacks, but you know, certainly pros and cons of any any given situation, right? I believe that that the primary purpose behind having a structure in which you would have. The CFO COO type of position, reportable directly to the board would really be. I I think Nicole said it really well, the. Really, really important functions that happen under the financial and support service side that the board really needs to be. Well informed, have a very open line of communication. And and be able to have those discussions and make those decisions in a way that they feel. They are fully informed and they are making great decisions for our students, our community, etc. The other prominent piece of that, and Nicole touched on this a bit earlier, is. If you have a situation in which there is or arises some type of disagreement, discrepancy. Communication breakdown within the district, then you have the ability to have another executive officer that that you can. Continue to correspond with, continue to. Run the the day to day operations of the district, so to speak, and don't have a a major breakdown or or lapse in communication, so. I think those are really the two primary benefits of that. I think the structure makes sense in the idea that. On under the structure that you see in front of you and and the work that that the board has done up to this point, board leadership and. Nicole and. Is you are breaking down the organization between sort of the academic side. And then the financial and operational side. As Nicole mentioned, you you see that reflected in a lot of districts around the nation. And you also see it reflected in a lot of businesses where you have the chief financial officer, operating officer. On one side of the house and then the. You know, either academic side, obviously, in in our business or whatever the the true business side is. In another organization, and so that's a really logical way to break it down, it makes sense in terms of the hierarchical structure. And it and it, I believe it would flow well. So I I think those are really some of the primary benefits. Oh, the one other thing I wanted to touch on, President Thomas, is. Of course, that that dash line, so. A lot of organizations have a a dash line and and that can represent different things. Where what I've seen that emphasized as is what they call line of communication. Or cooperation oftentimes, meaning that those two positions parallel each other in the expectation. So in this case, the expectation from the board is that they are working cooperatively. Communicatively and and towards the betterment of the organization and that is an expectation. Not just so so the line represents an expectation, not just, hey. You two need to talk to each other, it's no, we expect there to be. Open communication dialogue and and work that happens between those two positions in betterment of the organization. So wanted to touch on that as well, but I I think those are the primary things, President Thomas, and certainly happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, we do have three hands up right now, really quickly though, before I go to other board members, do you know? How many other South Dakota districts that are similar to this?
You know, I do not right off the the top of my head, President Thomas, I think, obviously. In a lot of ways, South Dakota approaches things in a in a bit more of a traditional sense. So I I don't know that right off the top of my head.
Okay, so I think I do know at least Balfour does this. And Harrisburg, but we could look into that, I know that. I know that one of our attorneys had looked into it to see how that how they were organized and how long and whatnot, so it is it is even being done. In South Dakota, we could look.
Yes, that's correct. You're right, I do recall that now that you mention it, that yeah, the attorney mentioned that that they have a very similar structure.
We have Jamie Clopans.
I was just gonna say kind of, and as Swire said, we've, you know, had a great deal of discussion, I think the other, one of the other benefits of this is. People work best when they're doing what they know best. And superintendents are not, like, most of them are not coming from a business world, they're coming from an education world because that is their passion, so I think. One of the things this does is allow both of these functions to function at their strength. You know, a a teacher who's certified in three different things, if. Mass their passion, that's what they're gonna love and be the best at, so I think it. The idea that serves our district well to give two people their strengths and to function at their best. And then their specialty instead of asking someone, so I really do anything about if you're asking a superintendent to function as both or asking a person who's a CFO to function. Or education, like, you're really kind of asking them something to do that's really outside their wheelhouse. And so, I mean, I think people obviously would do the best they can, but I think when we give two people who are the best at it, I think that's gonna serve everybody better.
Bishop Carr.
Oh, I just went off at the top. I think this shows who's first, I just figured that out.
I I'm in full support and I in our leadership meeting, I told them I'm geeking, I geeking out, I love org charts, I just. I just think they're fabulous, and I think what. Mr. Sassy was talking about that we the board has to make sure that it answers some. Questions or this org does what we wanna do, I think what I found in coming to the board in the previous. Organizational charge that everything from the district was funneling through the superintendent. And the problem with with that that we've that I found is that a lot of information under the superintendent wasn't being communicated. To the board, and that's very dangerous because I'm responsible, right? Nobody but us seven are behind these desks doing public comments, right? So if. I wanna make sure that that the buck stops with me, so then I should have a say or at least know what was going on. And so that was in in the previous organizational chart, that was a problem, so. I'm in favor of this because this solves that problem in the sense that. As as Ms. Wragge said, that we're responsible for policy, we're responsible for finances. And we're responsible for not only just, I I think this is another mistake that people make. Not only we are we responsible for hiring the superintendent, but we're responsible for what the superintendent does. Right, we we evaluate them, we monitor them and and Mr. And Clay was very mindful. To me that we don't micromanage, but again, we are responsible for what that position does, and so this organizational chart really does. Solve and give the responsibility to the board in policymaking, in the budget and in in being a superintendent. Obviously, before their final improvement. Approval that obviously we'd like to see. The different categories under the superintendent, under the directors and under the. Support services, but but I love this this chart.
Michael.
Thank you, I agree, sorry, I still have this coffee covered. Okay, I think I'm good now, I agree, I definitely would support this, mostly just because. Of how much money plays a role into everything, you think of things that. Happen in the curriculum side of it, the pathway side of it, all of those things, none of that happens without the financial part, so. I agree that that is important to have that, those two kind of parallel paths. One thing I did just wanna clarify regarding the superintendent CEO thing. Which I don't think is gonna be an issue here, but one of the concerns as an outsider that I actually asked at that meeting was their CEO. Requires no certification, so I could go be a CEO in Colorado District forty nine according to what he told me. That makes me nervous, that is not, that is something that I definitely wanna make sure that we don't have happen here in Rapid City, I do think that it should be someone certified. And someone who does have a history in education, who has been working in education and those sorts of things, so I just wanted to clarify those two things, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Jim?
So I'm gonna piggyback on a lot of what my other board members have said. I really like this separation here for the comment that made one does academics, the other does business. But at the same time, the state only gives us so much money. And if we're not all not on the same team all the way down, we don't realize how much the budget affects everything. So we have to be cognizant of that. The the, at the end of the day. However, we wanna set it up, we need to just set it up. I I I don't think we need to waste time, I mean, if somebody wants to do the research, go for it. But we all pretty much have an idea of what we're looking for. I I will tell you one bone of contention that I have is all the contacts that I've had across the state call me up. And they go, what the heck's a C CEO doing? We understand it's in the contract, but it's superintendent. The financial advisors, the business manager, that's what everybody in the state, that's what everybody in the nation understands of schoolwork, the terminology. We know what we're asking, we know what we're asking of our employees on how we do that. Personally, I'd like to just go right back to the same terminology because it's easier, but let's move on with the communication part of. Are they talking? If they're talking, if your staff is talking and it opens line of communication, if leadership, and I wanna thank you for sending out all those deb every week. It is really nice to to see, the fact of the matter is, is we're communicating, doesn't matter what you call them. But for the rest of the state. People are, people are asking a ton, w- w- why don't you just call them superintendent, why don't you just call? That's all I'm saying, let's just, let's just change the verbiage back, let's call them what they are, what the job functions are doing in the state. I understand Coy just said, you know, we're kind of old fashioned, but there's nothing wrong with that. But at the end of the day, we know how we want them separated, we know why we want them separated, and we want them to focus. Like my board member to the left of me, Jamie said, we want them to focus on the academics and the business and what they're good at, so let's do it. And let's just move forward with that, so, thank you.
Action, I like it.
President Thomas, I would say that in addressing Mr. Berkland's concern, that can be addressed. In a job description with expectations, which is something that I think any. Superintendent search company is going to ask you for. And that would need work that needs to be done, but it it could with. With, I mean, it would need to be board approved, but it would address that certification need. I think many of you know I've asked you if we could, can I call myself superintendent? Because I get so many questions, Jim is a hundred percent right. You go someplace, they look at my name tag, they say what, and I say, it's the same thing, so. I would, I think that we can include it in the chart like the old chart had it, but. When we're talking, when I'm talking to the State Department of Ed or when they're emailing me, they're addressing it as superintendent. It it seems to confuse everybody if we use some other terminology. But I think we need to, once the board decides on the top part of this organizational chart. As Bishop Carr said, the other piece definitely will need addressed and done. But this will allow the next piece, which I think is the. RFPs for superintendent search or however the board decides to progress with that. And it will also allow the work to become with the job description of these two positions, and and this is, I think. I'm not speaking out of turn when I say we are looking at the twenty three, twenty four school year unless something gets put into place sooner.
Well, I would say the sooner the better, either way, because this is to your comment, Jim. Because then we can move forward with a strategic plan, go ahead.
I do have one last. I got a couple of calls from Colorado. Two of their, two of district forty nine's leaders quit this year, and they're in a little turmoil, just FYI.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
And Jim, I don't care what it's what it's called, but Ms. Wragge, do you wanna explain? Because you explained to us in the leadership why we were gonna call it CFO and COO, I agree with the superintendent, that's. Probably clearer, but there were, I think there was a reason why we were gonna use this versus business manager, no?
In our district, we utilize the term manager. As roles under director, so so for instance, Dr. Brechner is the college and career readiness manager. We have a support service manager, so even though. Many other districts call it their finance manager or their business manager, and Coy can speak to this as well. And and he's, I think, suffered under the same confusion from other entities as as I do when I talk CEO, when he talks director of. Of finance, they're like business manager, there's some confusion there and it's it's part of what we have. We have created amongst ourselves, so we would need to, if we want to go the traditional route that the state looks at. Business managers, then we would have to look at changing terminology. In other positions, current positions that we have in our organizational chart where we have. People named manager and we consider a manager to be under a director. And that that is why we chose, when we met as leaders, that is why we chose CFO and COO. Coy could speak to it, I don't know that there'd be as much confusion on the chief financial officer part as there is on the. CEO part. But that, I don't know, Coy, do you have any thoughts?
Before before Coy, I just wanna make the point, and maybe we can be a leader instead of a follower. And just change it the way it's supposed to be instead of defaulting to what everybody says it is, so just a thought.
Coy, would you like to make a comment?
Sure, sure, absolutely, yeah, no, I I I think that those are, you know, really common issues and. One of the. Issues that we run into is in particular around the business side or the the business function is. A lot of the statutes in our state. Refer to a business manager, and so that is kind of the moniker that often follows around. The business people out in in districts, but. I I would agree with Nicole, I think there's gonna be a lot more clarity in terms of calling someone a a chief financial officer because. That is a more common term, even in the bit, even in the education side of things. Then, you know, the the CEO moniker, whether that's chief ed, education officer. Um, then, you know, the, the CEO, uh, moniker, whether that's Chief Ed, Education Officer or Chief, um, Executive Officer. So I, I don't think we'll run into a lot of issues, um, like Nicole said, the, the tricky part is we have a good size function in our system that we refer to as managers. Um, so, you know, calling someone a, a, a business manager then, um, kind of presents a problem. But it, it really is more, um, as long as the board and, and the district understand who is the reference in terms of who is the, um, officer responsible for the functions that are set out in that codified law, um, I think we're fine. I, I don't think we'll, we'll run into any issues there.
Thank you. Um, real quick, Michael, before I go to you, um, I do understand and I agree with you about having that certification. We are too large of a district to not really have that, but in statute, it is allowed by districts who might be way smaller and cannot afford a superintendent. Um, so but I understand it for the small districts because they, they don't have that opportunity as often. And that's why it's written into the statute, um, that they can, that small districts can have the opportunity to still have someone chief in involved, but not necessarily with certifications that the superintendent has. So I just thought I made that comment. Go ahead.
Right, and I agree. Um, I would, just, I was just gonna say, so I would propose that we trailblaze as the CFO and stick to tradition with the superintendent. That seems like the best path forward to maintain our structure and be the least confusing is say, sorry, everyone else, ours is a CFO. But we will meet you in the middle and we'll say, we got a superintendent.
Any other comments?
Just procedurally, so when would we? We'd have to vote at a regular meeting to get this.
I think because, yes, um, if, if this were an organizational chart that changed just underneath the superintendent, that would be that person's job to change it and their decision. Um, however, when we're splitting it off at that level, I think we need to just make a resolution that we're changing the organization chart. So we'll, we can write that up. Any comment?
No, um, with your permission, we'll put that as an addendum on the October fourth meeting.
We could if you have that, if we have the language before we post it.
I can do that. Yes.
Okay.
Great. And then, um, on the eighteenth, do you wanna have an R, us to have an RFP ready?
Yes.
For the superintendent search?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Jamie.
Really quick, um, I think that's great. I like moving forward. Um, with that, just looking in that resolution, do we then later also have to define our role as hiring and evaluating both the superintendent and the CFO the way this is written?
Right. Yes. Yeah. That might have to, there might be a policy or two in the board governance that we have that might need to be changed as well. We'll look at that. Okay. Other, do we have any others?
I, I have something when I'm president. I have reached out to Mr. Daniel during the meeting here and he is going to meet with the vendor and enable that camera so that in the future meetings, it may not be Tuesday, but we will be able to see the open forum speakers on camera then.
Oh, great. Thank you. All right, with no other others, uh, I need a motion to adjourn. Jim and Mike, all those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed. Oh, wait, do we need a roll call on that? Uh, Michael. We do, we do need a roll call since Clay is on. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes.